Evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission, Tuesday, March 18th. If you're here for something else, you're in the wrong place. I'm Judge Sheehan, I'm the chairman. We have all regular members. There we go.
No, it's not her.
I know, I was gonna say we're gonna point somebody out. We have all regular members present here this evening, and if I was allowed to finish, I'd say Commissioner Conway is not present, although I appreciate the help. In her stead this evening will be Mary Ellen Madaleska, one of our faithful alternates, or the faithful alternate Dave Rosendresch is here also. Always good to have you both. So Mary Ellen will be seated not only for the regular portion of the meeting where we will vote, she'll be seated for the public hearings as well, as well as the other four regular members, which includes my son. Minutes for number seventeen, minutes number seventeen eighty-five, March 4th. I understand, Clifton, there's a correction from what was distributed, and you've received both copies, both the original and the revised. The revised was distributed in your Dropbox. And why don't you just explain briefly what the change was?
Commissioner Morrison rightfully pointed out that I didn't correctly put in the tally of the votes in the original version, so I revised and added the tally of the votes that were taken by the ballot.
Thank you for that input, Commissioner, and thank you for correcting it before tonight. Any other questions on the minutes before we entertain a motion? Is there a motion on minutes number seventeen eighty-five?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve meeting minutes for meeting number seventeen eighty-five for March 4th, 2025, as submitted.
A motion by Ryan to approve the revised minutes, correct?
Revised minutes, correct.
As distributed in the Dropbox.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Second advice.
Gary, thank you, Gary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye. Public comment? This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that wishes to discuss anything that's not on the agenda, have an opportunity to come up and take the mic and address the commission. Simply state your name for the record, and the mic is yours. No one willing to come up for public comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to correspondence. Clifton?
None.
No correspondence. Staff report?
The only note that I have is, as I mentioned at the previous meetings regarding the citizen appointee to the POCD Steering Committee, that was out today in both papers, on both the London Day and the Westbury Sun. It's also on the website. It's also, the, both the POCD survey and the POCD website are alive, so that's all been distributed to the commission. It's been posted on the town's website. Please take the survey, and then please distribute the survey to everybody that you know in town. Thank you.
Did you receive all of the feedback from all the commissions that were asked to appoint members?
I haven't received all the appointees yet.
Okay.
Because they all haven't had their regular meetings, but we will have them before the commission makes decisions on the citizen appointees.
I appreciate you getting all of that out as quickly as you did. I had a comment from the chairman of the WPCA right afterwards asking me questions. It was like the next day, so thank you for getting right on that. Anything under commission?
No, I think.
Okay. Item C, zoning enforcement violations. Anyone have any questions, Clifton, on the reports? Any items for administrative review?
None.
This is going very well here, I presume.
Yeah, we're gonna be here by seven thirty.
Okay. Under Old Business, item seven A is withdrawn. And I should also mention at this time, if you're here for either of the public hearings, items B and C, a zoning amendment is one of them. The applicant's name is Warrilla, and the other one is Kay Stevens. Both of those have been postponed or withdrawn, so we'll only be hearing the Maple Lawn Farm application under public hearings this evening. I don't want you to hang around and think that the other items are out here, and they're not, but Maple Lawn Farm will move forward this evening under public hearings. So under Old Business, item eight B, application PZ two five zero, nine five D, S Trembino, and I believe Sergio, you represent the Trembinos.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Sergio Torensia with Torensia and Associates, offices at ninety-nine Mechanic Street, Pawlton, Connecticut. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, and the plans and the application before you this evening were prepared by my office and my responsible charge. The land survey, which is the first sheet that I brought up, was prepared by Mark Castellanos, my survey manager, also licensed in the state of Connecticut. We're here this evening to go over three lot, a proposed three lot subdivision located at five fifty Al Harvey Road. With me also this evening is Stano Trembino, the owner of the property, and also Mr. Chris Taska, who his daughter has interest in one of the properties, has it on contract. He is gonna want us to come up and just say a few words to the commission after I get done with his interest in this property and its history as a Stonington resident. So the map that I have up right now, there's a couple of highlights on it. I wanted to just bring attention to the blue areas. Those are areas that are wetland areas, and then the yellow highlight is the hundred-foot upland review zone, review area. I will identify that we did receive this past month a wetlands commission's approval for this proposed subdivision. There hasn't been any material changes that I believe that have been done since then, but we have made some changes to the plan that is before you in your packets this evening, which I'm gonna go over this tonight. And I'm gonna try to highlight some of those, the more prominent ones. I can tell you that the subdivision configuration has not changed. It's still the same three lots, the same sizes, the same lot layout configuration, generally the same layout of the buildings, septic systems, wells, and the open space dedication as well. What we have updated is through the process of working with the town engineer and his commentary with the peer reviewing engineer, that we've made some changes to the stormwater management of this site, and I will go into a little bit more detail on some of that. Just some background on the site. It was an existing single-family residence. That building is the northern portion of the site. It's, it looks like a stealth bomber almost on an aerial map. Very strange shaped house, built nineteen seventy. I don't believe it was ever finished, but the folks that are looking to purchase it, and Chris can go into it, are gonna be renovating it and making it their home. The wetlands were flagged by my wetlands biologist, Abazinus Environmental Services, as you can see, the blue lines. Those wetlands largely between Route one eighty-four and the southern portion of the property, pretty much is, is majority of this is all wet. I actually subsequently to the survey had some additional wetlands flagged. There is, there is a small portion of upland along one eighty-four, but it's really inconsequential because it's not developable land. There's no really appreciable area that we can access from that portion of the site. Mainly, we've been keeping the development, obviously where the house is, and then you'll see the other two lots will be flanking. The lots are serviced by public electric utility, electric and communication, but have an onsite well and septic system. There is no flood zone in this area, so it's a unshaded X-zone, which is not of any flood hazard concern. And basically, the lot drains pretty much north, north to south and to the east into the wetlands complex. There's a stream off-site, and a lot of the water ends up in that stream and then into this wetland complex. It's very flat, even to the north, there's another large wetland complex. Lots of wetlands, north, east, and south, leaving this high point of land that appears to be developable, and we've had testing done to prove such. Just one other thing I'll bring your attention is, there is a pond here, just north of this wetland complex here. Standing water year-round. The wetlands commission took special notation of that, and we're doing our best to keep a decent buffer and separation from that. There is a small isolated wetland along near Al Harvey Road. You can see this existing horseshoe driveway. There's two curb cuts along Al Harvey Road to access the single-family residence. And then there's another small pocket wetland in the rear. This one, though, however, is flagged as a possible vernal pool, and we've observed separation to that accordingly to respect that, the environmental integrity of that space. We're not sure if it's a vernal pool, but in abundance of caution, because we can't test it until the spring. We're coming up to that time, but...
What's a vernal pool?
Vernal pool, I don't know the exact definition. I'm gonna give the layperson's definition that I understand. It's a special aquatic feature where it's become, it's a very...
It's breeding.
It's a breeding ground.
I can, I can...
It's very sensitive.
It's a temporary body of water that's typically flooded by snow or rain in the spring, and it is normally identified as vernal pool based on animals that breed there, fairy shrimp, spotted salamanders, wood frogs, who just started calling over the weekend, and then also some wood turtles as well.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
No worries.
Outstanding. Thank you.
So we'll get into the proposed subdivision plan. This is the overall subdivision plan.
If anybody in the audience, excuse me, just one sec. If anybody in the audience who wants to see this and you wanna reposition here, you could come up and even stand behind the commission if you like.
So the proposed subdivision, three lots that are fronting along Al Harvey Road. The northernmost lot, we are calling Sub Lot One. Sub Lot Two is the existing residence, which will be served by a portion of the driveway that exists. And then Sub Lot Three, which is the southernmost, which has most of the encumbrance of wetlands on it, but has a small pocket little upland area and an access way to get there, the way that we've laid out the property lines. You can see the additional wetlands that were flagged along one eighty-four. There is a small portion of upland down in the southern portion of the property. And then we have this odd tail that is on this lot. And what we've done is taken the rear portion of the property and dedicated that to open space per the Stonington regulations. We need fifteen percent of the lot to be dedicated to open space. We are dedicating one hundred and thirteen thousand four forty-eight, which exceeds the fifteen percent, and of that, of the open space, seven and a half percent of the parcel needs, of, seven and a half percent of the parcel before it's subdivided, needs to be upland, and we've accommodated that as well. So you can see a portion of it's wet, and then there's the wetland here, and then the rest is, anything that's not hatched is upland. So we meet that requirement. I believe staff has confirmed that, but I don't wanna speak for them. Sub Lot One meets the zoning. We're in an RR eighty zone, so we need a minimum of eighty thousand square feet. Sub Lot One has just over eighty thousand and around eighty-three thousand. Sub Lot Two is at one hundred and one thousand. Sub Lot Three is the largest, at a two hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet. Those have all been prorated as well per the regulations. You can only use, for those of, I'm assuming you all know, but you can only use so much of the wetlands, only a percentage of the wetlands towards your lot area in order to satisfy the requirement of density to the eighty thousand, and we meet all that. We are not proposing any disturbance within the wetlands. Sub Lot One is largely outside of the hundred, even outside the hundred-foot zones. There's a few places where we encroach with some grading. I do wanna identify for the benefit of the commission that these buildings are not real buildings. These were, these are footprints, they're actually very, excuse me, fairly large footprints. I think they're forty by sixty, which is a decent, very decent size home. I find when I do these subdivision plans, I try not to box my client or the applicants in, you know, unless it's, unless the lot is restricted. So we have put on a generous sized footprint for a four-bedroom home on these sites, with the intent that these lots will have to come back for zoning, and potentially, I believe the condition under wetlands was that Sub Lot Three because of the encumbrance of small wetlands. It would have to go back to wetlands once the subdivision is approved for the single-family development of that. Potentially, the lot number one will not have to go back, because we can keep it outside. We've met with, we did, we conducted soil evaluations onsite, witnessed by Ledge Light Health District. Those results and all the percolation rates, we did experience some relatively high groundwater. You can see the septic systems are relatively large for four-bedroom, but they're for four-bedroom home, but we did get suitability approval from Ledge Light Health District for those septic systems. So they've identified that we can accommodate code-complying areas based on this proposed subdivision. There's wells that meet all the separation distances for these two lots. There's an existing well on the middle lot, which will remain to serve the Sub Lot Two. Sub Lot Two also has an electrical service that's underground, that is served by a pole on the, along Al Harvey Road. We'll get into a little bit more detail now in the plans. Yeah, so let's just go, we'll start back, Sub Lot One. We're gonna eliminate the driveway, the portion of the driveway that's serving the existing residence that is on the north side. That'll, that'll get eliminated and re-vegetated as probably yard. We're gonna put in a new curb cut, a new driveway. The house, the footprint, all of the impervious area from the roof runoff is routed to a rain garden to the rear that will provide stormwater treatment. The driveways will be of crushed stone, but we have also provided additional treatment in another rain garden to treat all the driveway runoff. And in case that in the future, the owner of the property decides they wanna pave the driveway, we have adequate treatment in order to do so. The second driveway, the second lot, Sub Lot Two, they'll utilize the existing driveway, so we haven't, and the existing home under this subdivision, so we haven't proposed any additional stormwater treatment on that site, and it'll utilize its existing septic system, but we have shown that it can accommodate a code-complying area for a new septic if needed, which is required by Ledge Light Health District. Getting back to the utilities for this lot, there's an electrical line originating at a utility pole, and we basically took that property line and started it at the utility pole, so the utilities remained on the, on Sub Lot Two, and then that gave a pretty intuitive line to subdivide this center lot off.
Is that overhead or underground?
It's underground.
Underground, okay.
And to avoid having to cross easements and things like that, we said, let's put the property line, it's a good demarcator, although it's not required, credit the utility pole, and it just worked out well. On the other side of the utility pole, we put the curb cut for the other driveway and tried to maintain, you know, the, I believe we have at least a fifty-foot buff, or separation of the driveway, and then we have some grading to take in the stormwater from that driveway into another rain garden before, so it gets treatment, and then it's able to overflow into the, into the wetland area. I think we're at closest there, we're at thirty-two. Once again, Wetlands Commission blessed us, and we're content with what we had proposed in order to protect the environmental features on the site. Same, same thing on this Sub Lot Three, a forty by sixty box with a bioretention rain garden area, down gradient to handle all the roof runoff, and then meeting all the separation requirements for the septic system. We did propose a crushed stone type surface driveway, but at, once again, we've put in additional treatment in the case that in the future it's ever paved. These are relatively long driveways, and didn't wanna put the onus on the owners to pave them right away. Usually, people wanna, they'll do some kind of gravel or crushed stone, and then maybe some millings, and then over time they'll pave it, or they'll just pave the area in front of their house and keep a gravel driveway. Gives it a more rural feel, which is, Al Harvey Road is, I think, a more rural area of town, but with, the option is there. I did meet with the town engineer to address his comments. I don't know if you've had a chance to review any of those, but as, I got those back to him today, but I met with him and went over point by point with Mr. Greenlaw on each thing. I believe we handled probably close to seventy-five, eighty percent or more of those comments, which is addressed on this plan, things like showing a stockpile, adjusting some straw wattle, a little bit better general sequencing on our construction sequencing plan and for the erosion and sediment control plan. One of the bigger things that came up was the stormwater management, making sure that these rain gardens function properly and they're tested properly. We've been experiencing as of late that there needs to be more testing. I typically don't do a lot of testing for single-family residential stormwater features, but in abundance of caution and to work with the town engineer, we have added stipulation. I mean, these are all gonna have to go back to the, to the town engineer for his approval, but there'll have to be additional testing in these areas where we're proposing stormwater features to make sure we have adequate groundwater separation. Infiltration rates will need to be, he wants infiltrometer tests for each one, and make sure that we have adequate separation of groundwater for those. So we're happy to accommodate that, but since these lots, like I said, are there, they're pretty well developed, and they could be built as shown, but most likely someone's gonna be changing these sites in some way, shape, or form, and that's gonna have to take some, we'll have to put some attention to that down the road, and we'll happy to work with the town engineer to have these approved if this commission so chooses it as a stipulation. One of the things that I always work with Chris on is to make sure that we're not having any downstream adverse impacts. He wanted me to make sure that any water coming on, coming towards Al Harvey Road would not compromise Al Harvey Road in any way, or at least not exasperate any existing issues. Best of my knowledge, I don't think there's been too many, it has been any issues of water going across Al Harvey Road, and we're gonna keep it that way. Any of the water that we capture, and a lot of it, it goes both ways. It goes to the east and to the west towards Al Harvey Road. What we've introduced through the site is to make sure that any water that gets captured in those areas can drain through, under, through the driveways. So I worked with Chris Greenlaw, and we, as we were going through the plans, he said, it wasn't a comment, but let's address it, make sure that any water can get across here. And, you know, we already have a low spot on Sub Lot One, there's a wetland here, these are areas where the water wants to travel, and we can consolidate it in those areas and then get it to where it ultimately ends up is in this large wetland complex. So we've put drainage ways across this as part of the subdivision, and those will have to be subject to an agreement between the property owners, and now's the time to do that, to make sure there's no adverse, adversarial relationships between these property owners. It'll be documented that water is meant to flow in that direction and ultimately get to the well. And then a portion of that is obviously going off the back to a larger wetland complex in a streamway in the back. So those were some of the more prominent comments that the town engineer had, and like I said, these are gonna come back for his review when we finalize the design for these lots. They also wanted me to do a sightline plan. Generally speaking, this is a long, flat road. No issues with sightline except, look, trying to see around a utility pole in some of the locations. There is a short stone wall, and there is vegetation up to the, to the front of the property in some areas, so we have put notes on, we'll accommodate with that sightline plan, which we just actually submitted with the plans this afternoon, is that any sightline impediments will be cleared appropriately. There's no large, really large trees. There's a lot of young growth on this property, actually. There's, there's not a lot of old growth trees. Most of the trees that we, most of the forested areas were very, relatively small caliper, two and three-inch trees. There are some larger ones on the property, but at some point in the past, this had been, must have been cleared or thinned out, because there's not a lot of mature growth on the site.
Sergio, just to let you know, I talked to Bill, the neighbor across the street. He said at one time they cleared a lot of that property on Al Harvey. You could actually see through the...
See right through.
...prop rate to one eighty-four.
So just state your name for the record.
Oh, Chris, Chris Taska.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That was about ten years ago they cleared it all.
Yeah. And you could actually see right through it. That's where those small trees are.
Thank you. So with that, yeah, we've addressed, I believe we've addressed the majority of the town engineer's comments. I think that would be the one thing that, unless there's other things that be stipulated this evening, should you decide to move forward with an approval on this. And as I've mentioned, that these lots are gonna be coming back for administrative review if you're comfortable with that. I believe that covers most of my, if not all of my testimony tonight on this and my presentation. Mr. Taska did speak up. Do you wanna get up and say a few more words while you're here?
Yeah, I'll say briefly.
You wanna get up to the podium? Just say like...
Yeah.
We just need a name, so that the record, the record could be, you know, amended. Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Taska, T-A-S-C-A, and I'm a resident of Stonington for forty-two years. I live on Peacock Trail. My daughter graduated college around twenty-one years ago, moved to Colorado, opened a business, had a, got married, had a son, and after twenty-two years, they wanna move back to the town of Stonington. Please. I'm tired of getting on that airplane going out to Colorado, but it's, they've looked at this property, I've looked at the property. It's a beautiful piece of property out there, and their requirements were Stonington school system, Dean's Mill, Mystic Middle, Stonington High School. Her son would go to school with them. They're cousins. My other daughter's married, lives in Mystic, and they wanted to go to the same school system, so I have a five, six, seven-year-old grandson's going to the same school. So that was their first thing, we gotta move to Stonington. Then they wanted a rural area, and this is just a very nice piece of property. My other son-in-law, Brian Wills, he's a contractor. He looked at the house, it needs work, and they're willing to spend a fair amount of money there.
Brian was here with a restaurant application last month.
Yeah, Brian, you know Brian Wills? That's my other son-in-law, so we got the Colorado one in him. But they both flew in from Colorado, looked at the property. With Brian's expertise, my other daughter said, hey, this can work, you know? And gonna have to spend a lot of money, but when it's done, it'll be beautiful, and like I said, it's a beautiful area. Al Harvey Road's beautiful, one of the nicest roads in Stonington. And as you know, there aren't a lot of properties in Stonington for sale for under a million dollars, so it's kinda in their, you know, range where, how much money they could spend. So I just wanted to say, I hope you guys approve this, and they'll be very happy. That's all. All right?
Mr. Trembino's here also, he's the owner of the property. If you have any questions of him or of me, I'm happy to watch.
Does the board have any questions of the applicant or any of the members of this party?
I have a question about the open space, Sergio. Have you thought about, you know, I'm not a big fan of these little pockets of open space. Have you thought about fee and lieu? Is that a possibility at all for this? Like, who would, who would you give the open space to? Is there any nearby that you would contiguate? Is that a word? Make up words. Is there any open space contiguous to this that you can make a green way, or is it just, is fee and lieu a better option?
Wetlands commission had the same concerns. It's a requirement, we're meeting that requirement. I'd have to defer to my client, but I don't think he's expressed any interest in the fee and lieu, because he has the land too, that does not have to do that.
So who's gonna, what are you gonna do with the open space? Are you gonna deed it to somebody, or, how does that, does it have to get deeded to somebody? Is it just...
It's up to the commission.
To who we, who they deed it to?
Correct. Now it's conveyed.
Could it remain in private ownership?
You mean do a confirmation?
It could, it could.
You can do a conservation easement.
It could be in a private, private ownership under a conservation easement as well. So the three options are fee in lieu, conveying it to one of the local land trusts, or keeping it as private property and then putting the whole property under conservation. Those are the three in the subdivision.
I'd prefer fee.
Who would actually own it if it was had a conservation easement on it? Would it be one of the property owners?
It'd probably be the original property owner.
I believe if they create an association to, that they would.
If they were to, if they were to share it as a recreational space, then it would be under like a shared agreement for just those property owners. But if not, I could standard your ownership, original owners.
This is going to come up again. I have another subdivision I'm looking at, same, same kind of premises.
I mean, my preference would be fee.
Conservation commission made the same note on fee in lieu as well as the wetlands.
That they've all wanted fee in lieu of?
They have all suggested it. Ultimately, it's up to the commission to decide.
Any other questions of the applicant by the commission?
I have, I have one. I know that there was some comment on rainwater and runoff. Was there any comment on the addition of two wells onto this water table, especially one that's so close to that one what was labeled as a round pool in the first subsection?
There was no commentary at the well's question on that. I don't generally get involved too heavily with groundwater assessment and wells. We basically cite them on the plan to make sure they meet separation to the septic systems. We could always consider relocating them, but I don't know how much that impact is that going to have on the resources there or not. So I believe that each lot is entitled to a well, assuming that it gets approved, but given they're relatively large lots, I don't know if there would be that much of an impact to the water table here. It's also a pretty high water table. So the resource appears to be abundant, but I don't do hydro geo stuff, so I can't say for sure.
Any other questions? Any questions of Clifton?
Clifton, is there anything outstanding? I know he addressed most of the town engineer's comments, I think, and I know he submitted something, I think, this afternoon.
Yep, everything's been mostly addressed. There's a stipulation to address any outstanding comments with the town engineer. Sergio did mention the stipulations from the wetlands commission. The particular one regarding lot three, he already mentioned that has to go back before inland wetlands, before development. You don't need to restipulate that since that's under their jurisdiction, but that's pretty much it.
Okay. Commission have any thoughts on ownership of the open space?
I'd like, I'd like a stipulation for fee in lieu of.
Can I ask then, Clifton, how is a fee in lieu calculated?
The fee in lieu is calculated with, you'd have to work with the property owner and the assessor.
It's a percentage of the, of the fair market value.
Market value of the lot.
Yeah, of the lot before it's subdivided.
Before it's subdivided.
I still don't remember that percentage, as I could look it up.
It's ten fifteen percent. It's in the subdivision, I just don't have it in mind.
Would it make sense, and just exploring the other option you mentioned, for the private ownership under a conservation easement, then would it make sense to leave it with the original owner or the people who are purchasing that center lot since the other two, since we know they're going to be there if this gets approved? Would that make more sense?
I, I'll go ahead. I was just going to say, the legal language of access to that easement, who owns it could be done after. It would just say, you could just say one of the three property owners would take responsibility for that.
Okay, fine. It can be that generally and work out afterward.
We can work it out.
Everybody okay with that?
No, we should discuss that because I, I'm not in favor of that. I would rather see fee in lieu of.
I'm sorry, and specifically what would you support?
Fee in lieu of open space.
Okay.
As the wetlands and conservation both requested as well.
Okay.
Right.
What's the consensus of the board on the fee in lieu of open space?
Excuse me, can I just get a point of clarification? There was a, did they stipulate that or did the wetlands commission comment on it?
They did not stipulate, they did not stipulate it.
Right, did, did they commented on it?
The conservation commission's recommendation was to pay fee in lieu of, but they can't stipulate anything.
Right. The conservation commission is advisory.
I wasn't at the wetlands.
Yes, I understand that.
Right. The conservation commission is advisory?
Correct.
Thank you. My, my client would like to speak to the commission if that's, if that's okay.
Certainly. Evening, sir.
Good evening. I was Tom Trembino, owner of the property. So I was at, obviously the wetlands commission and their concern was that, like everyone else in mind, you're going to have a sliver of open space that, you know, butts the main farm and, and boy, don't farm next to us, but there's no access to it. I mean, it doesn't do anything. So I totally agree, it doesn't make sense, but that's the regulation and that require a change. The reason I'm not in favor of fee in lieu of is just all that does is pass the monetary burden on to the person buying the house or the lots, which kind of defeats the purpose of trying to make affordable housing come, not affordable housing, an affordable property for people to stay in Stonington. This is the least dense division this property we could do to protect the neighbors, protect the area. My feeling, I'd prefer rather fee in lieu of, because I'm just going to pass it on to the next person. It's not really fair to them. You know, we can sign it, I mean, I do a lot of work with land trusts and we can sign a conservation easement, however you see fit. I would prefer that over fee in lieu of. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. So as I said before, trying to get a little consensus here. Who is in favor of fee in lieu of open space?
And I would be in favor of that.
I think I am too. It, it does make sense, I think.
Yeah.
In this case.
I think it benefits the town more, more than what.
And it, and I hope it doesn't place too much of a hardship on anyone, but it, it does make more sense from a standpoint of, you know, the town's perspective on this and the shape of the parcel and the ultimate value of it as open space is negligible. So I hope you understand. Brian, I know that you.
To be honest, I was actually citing on the private ownership. I just, I do, I understand the logic behind the fee in lieu of, especially in this, but I also think it does put a bit of an undue burden on someone, especially for this kind of property. That's kind of how I feel about it.
I, I understand and I think there's, there's certainly evidence to support that as well. What sways me in the other direction is, is the wetlands commission recognition.
Understood.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Conservation.
So if there isn't objection, it seems like there is a majority in favor of the other routes or everybody go along with that favorably or have any adverse comment or care to say anything else in favor of the other option?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Clifton, any further comments on this? And there's no public discussion on this, it's under all business, correct? Unless there's additional discussion on this, what's the commission's pleasure on the application of S. Trembino?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the subdivision application for S. Trembino with the following four recommended stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner as necessary. Number two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. And number four, a fee in lieu of open space shall be paid for the property that was, the portion of the property designated as open space.
Did you just want a clarification? Since you're voting on a fee in lieu of, that open space now gets merged with however we see fit with the other lots?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's all the lots are still conforming.
Yes, yeah, which they're going to be added more, more area to them, so.
Yeah, hopefully it adds value that sort of offsets the, the bite of the additional fee.
Correct, but the commission doesn't.
No, yeah, yeah.
So there's a motion made with four conditions by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sergio.
Okay. Next, we're going to go into public hearing and before we go into public hearing, I'll explain the procedure a little bit. First of all, if you wish to speak either for or against this, this application or just make a general statement, this signup sheet in the rear, we ask that you sign up. Just makes it easier for us to figure out who's speaking afterwards. And initially, the applicant will make the presentation. This is a continuation of a public hearing from February eighteenth. And at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, commission will ask questions, will refer to our staff for any input, then it will be open to, to public comment. Following public comment, it's envisioned that the commission will close the public hearing and we may vote on this depending on how the commission feels. Do we have any time on this remaining?
No.
No? Okay.
Not without scheduling a special meeting.
Okay.
Can I just ask a point of order, point of procedure, I guess? So they came before us, whatever, last month and presented, so we held it open for what? Like, are they coming back with new information?
Sedimentation erosion.
That's what it was, right?
Yeah, they did have a.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's all they're going to present on, they're not doing the whole.
Not the whole thing.
The whole shipping.
Yeah, it was specifically, specifically for sedimentation and erosion.
So I just want to make that clear to the audience that they're just going to be talking about this erosion plan as we ask them to come back with that for this.
Yeah, at the last meeting, there were a bunch of comments on sediment erosion control.
Yeah, but that they're not going to just clarify to the audience, they're not giving the whole talk again.
Have you done that?
Yeah, maybe.
And, and we wanted to make sure that sediment erosion control is covered with the required sedimentation and erosion control. Okay, so we have to remove this item from the table, so we need a motion from the commission to reopen the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the Maple Hills Farm application.
We can waive the reading of the legal ad, it was, it was read at the last meeting. Motion to reopen, is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Gary. Thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's open. Sir?
Yes, I'm Bill Burci with Mercer Burci Bernard Architects in Old Mystic. I'm a licensed engineer and also licensed architect and we're one thirty-seven.
We're a specialty these days.
Yeah, special, yeah. One thirty-seven, Old Mystic, Connecticut. And I would just, you know, we didn't submit this because it was in the master plan, but I thought a picture's worth a lot of words. It shows where the parking lot area would be if you, if we talked about that.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Give you some idea, you know what we're talking about. Okay, so erosion control, we updated the drawings to put the erosion control measures on a couple of drawings and put together reports, submitted that. And on drawing, site details, S. one point two, we added a silk fence detail, talks about installation and remove the fence only, you know, when construction is complete and vegetation has been reestablished, you know, how, how deep to dig and carry the fence. And then we indicated on the drainage control plan where the two silk fences would be, one would be walkall perimeter. These are really the only place this area drains true down to. And then we put a fence around the stockpile. We calculated, basically we go to the driveway section, take out six inches of topsoil in the parking area along these two driveways. That comes up to about, and then assume that that's thirty thousand eight hundred square feet by six inches and then assume it expands twenty-five percent. So that creates seven hundred and fourteen cubic yards of material and we came up with a stockpile area. The stockpile would only be six feet tall, but it'd be thirty-four feet by a hundred and forty-two feet would carry that volume. There's no reason to get a big, big thing. And we came up with, you know, a way to bring the trucks in so the topsoil could be used for farming activities later, you know, to do that. And you see, you can see in the photograph, you know, we're really talking about, you know, about a half, a half a percent pitch across the parking lot and a two to three percent pitch across this adjacent field. The photograph is showing this area here, you can see the stone wall, you get a glimpse of this fence, but basically these two fields are pretty much the same. So the planned activity is to put excavate, as I mentioned, about six inches, or excavate the topsoil, which is about six inches in just the parking area along these two drives and to replace that with stone fill and that's specified on the detailed drawing. You can see there's a little bit, it's a little bit of excavation around the field, maybe about ten feet out, just to fair the adjacent grades onto the, on the field. So the total square footage is, that might add another eight thousand square feet. Total square footage is less than an acre.
Total square footage of disturbance?
What?
Total square footage of disturbance?
Disturbance would be less than an acre, about thirty-eight thousand square feet. So the existing conditions, we're not expecting any kind of high velocity erosion, you know, with these low pitches. We just don't have any culverts that, we did erosion manual that's focused on, you know, high speed things coming down a culvert. So I think we talked about that. Sequence of events, we, prior to starting any excavation, we put this in for the stockpile and put the perimeter fence in down here. There's a little bit of a berm that we're putting here to just to guarantee nothing, nothing comes, comes across here and then down this way. Berm being about maybe a foot of adjusting the grade. I think it's probably less, but these are the contours that Lloyd R. came up with. And then basically maintain the top soils, you know, maintain the silk fences till the grasses, and I was talking to Paul, what he tends to plant is equi grass. It's a mixture of rye and coarse and timothy hay and lemon seed germinates in about ten days and in thirty days. And it can grow this high or, you know, cut down. It's got, it's a farm kind of grass, it's not residential grass. And then also in terms of a track pad, there's an area and we provide a photograph, you know, in our report, there's a hundred and fifty foot section of driveway that's just a one percent pitch. And over the last year, that was upgraded from, well, you know, was maintained, it was a gravel driveway for the farm use for the last twenty-five years and the stone topping was put on top. And those, and I tried to put a tire there so we could see the size of the stones, a three quarter inch to two inches, it's about two to three inches deep. So this really provides a track pad, but in fact, what's going to happen is trucks filled with stone are going to come in here and they're going to leave empty and they're really not, this is not like a construction site where they're driving all over mud, you know, and taking it out. And, you know, and in terms of schedule, this process will probably take a week, a week, so you could count on maybe a month.
So is there a tracking pad? You're already saying that the driveway is.
The driveway is a tracking pad.
Acts as a track.
Tracking pad, yeah. But we're not taking topsoil off, off the site. So that, that's really pretty much the erosion control. One thing.
Is that narrative on the plans, that sequence of operation?
Yeah, well, yes.
Or is it submitted somewhere?
It's submitted on, on a document.
Okay.
An F L N. And it's referred to a little bit in some of these.
But it is, it is part of the submission.
Yes, right. And the, the description refers to all those.
And the town engineer had that, Clifton?
Correct.
Thank you.
And one last thing, at the last meeting, there was a question about the site plan that I mentioned. Remember in the master control on master plan, we had a traffic study and I just, just read this one, well, two sentences. And it was that observations at the proposed site driveway locations indicate that the available intersection site distances to both the north and south are in excess. to both the north and south are in excess of 400 feet. The available site distances meet the current pond DOT criteria for an approach speed of 35 miles an hour. Wheeler Road is posted to be limited to 35 miles an hour." That's signed by Hesketh and Associates and professional engineer Scott Hesketh. That was, that was submitted in the master plan. I referred to that in the last meeting. But that's why it says 400 feet on our site plan. It was based on what the traffic engineer said. So I think that's close the erosion control.
That concludes the presentation?
Yeah, I think, I think so, yeah.
Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Questions, Clifton?
No.
I think maybe the last meeting, there was a question whether there were 88 parking spaces. I don't know, four times, and it's 88 slots. Yeah, and that, that was based on occupancy of two people per car, which we have been requesting as stipulation of the master plan.
Any questions of the applicant at all? Clifton, any additional material?
Couple additional items added to my report from the previous time. One is commenting on a, on a wetlands complaint, complaint number W25001, asking about the driveway apron being constructed in the upland review area.
We can't hear back here. We can't hear you.
I'll try to, I'll try to speak, I'll try to speak up.
We're sorry that we don't have a better room for this. If it helps you, there are seats up front.
Okay. So there was a wetlands complaint. Is this a little better?
Yes.
Okay. There's a wetlands complaint filed, wetlands complaint number 25001, which was, the complaint was that the driveway apron was paved to 50 feet within the upland review area, which is what's shown on the plans. The wetlands official reviewed the original complaint, found back in December that it was originally a 10-foot apron, which is required by our technical design standards for driveway apron. That's managed by DPW. DPW made that original requirement. And then in February, the Wicked E Clock Fire Department requested that the apron be extended to 60 feet total to accommodate the weight of the fire trucks so that the fire department could access the pond from both sides, which they use for water in case of fire events in a rural setting. So that explains the extension. The wetlands official found no damage to the regulated area as part of that development, and, but did request that there's a further stipulation added that any further improvements located within the upland review area are to be reviewed by the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. That's in your packet as a recommended stipulation number four.
Correct.
The only other comments that I added were in the recommended stipulations as a result of public comment from the last public hearing. One on the event hours, which the commission stipulated during the master plan stage would be between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Further updated and added language to that stipulation to say that the event setup and breakdown will occur one hour either side of that, which is in the master plan's event management plan that they submitted. So just further stipulating that. The other one I updated was regarding outdoor amplified music, which was stipulated to not be permitted for events without a revised site, or master plan. I further added language that stated, "Any amplified music indoors or inside the tent, which was approved, shall not be permitted outside the event hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m." So during the setup and breakdown, you can't play amplified music during that time. So it's just addressing comments from the public that were raised at the last time, further buffering those stipulations. There are no other questions or concerns on my end.
Thank you. There was quite a bit of concern about sediment erosion control. I noticed there's no sediment bond, sedimentation and erosion control bond recommended here. Should we consider one?
You can, you can add one. There's no issue with that. The town engineer in review of the original plan set didn't recommend erosion sedimentation control bond, but if the commission so chooses, they can add one.
Would it make sense, do you think, to establish, or to say that one be established in perhaps a small amount just to, you know, create an insurance? Okay.
That can be done.
If there are no other questions, can we move to public comment?
Correct.
No other questions? Okay. So at this time, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against, and I'll get the list and I'll read them in order here. So everyone will get a chance to speak. The applicant will have a chance to rebut. And if those who spoke initially wish to speak again, you can. The applicant can rebut again. We'll go back and forth until. Okay, until everyone has, feels they've said their piece. So Robert from Stonington Acres, I can't read your last name here. Yes, please. Good evening, sir. Nobody has a problem hearing me. My wife's always telling me to keep my voice down.
My name's Robert Callahan. I live at 32 Dolly Drive. I am a member of the Board of Directors of Stonington Acres Association. Stonington Acres Association is comprised of 48 residential properties, and they surround the applicant's farm on the northwest and south. Seems to me this Maple Leaf Farms has been getting every break in the book on their path to ruining the peace and safety of our quiet rural section of Stonington. For starts, they didn't even qualify for status as an agricultural heritage district and that they did not have 35 contiguous acres. No problem. We'll just change the rules so they can count woodland across the street as contiguous, which already isn't even farmland, so I don't, don't get that. Then as part of the master plan reiterated in the recent site plan, they present what is clearly a misleading traffic report. It assumes that most event traffic will arrive at the site traveling south from Route 184, where it is far more likely that the majority of traffic will be arriving and subsequently departing via I-95, traveling up Tagwong to Summers, then north on Wheeler, and onto the site. Summers Road is very narrow, and Wheeler Road between Summers and the site is narrow and winding. One can only assume that this obvious bit of misinformation, which has been pointed out to the applicant on more than one occasion and still uncorrected, is a deliberate attempt to avoid showing the dangers in bringing large amounts of traffic through these narrow roads. I assume you've all been to the site and seen, been on Summers Road and Wheeler Road, right? It's, okay. Submitting a revised traffic report was stipulation, was stipulation number four in the February 26, 2024 letter approving the Agricultural Heritage District zoning change. Doesn't appear to have been done. So far, the board's response is but none, as far as I could tell. If I were on the board, I would consider the blatant attempt of misinformation, this blatant attempt of misinformation as a personal insult. One of the few stipulations placed on Maple Leaf Farms was to limit serving of alcohol at events to 9:00 p.m. The last meeting, Mr. Eiler, our town planner, is even questioning that, suggesting it should be 10:00 p.m. to coincide with termination of the event. This seems quite counterintuitive with regard to traffic safety concerns. This past November, two of our SAA board members witnessed work being done at the applicant's property in what appeared to be inland wetlands. Reported this to the inland wetlands enforcement officer, Candace Palmer. She called me back a couple of days later to say that the duck house had been moved and some driveway upgrades were made. I think this is sort of what Mr. Eiler was talking about. Requested, they were requested by the fire department, therefore, no permit was required. Two weeks ago, Mr. Webb, who is gonna speak in a few minutes, Mr. Johnson, the Stonington Acres Association president, who is accompanying me, and I attended the Inland Wetlands Commission monthly meeting. Mr. Webb presented this information to the commission together with additional work that appears to have been done in the wetlands area without permit. Members appeared quite surprised that this had not been brought to their attention and no permit issued. Apparently, this too has subsequently been resolved in favor of the applicant, though I'm not sure now after hearing Mr. Eiler. I wasn't quite following all that. I wrote this before the meeting, obviously. During all the hearings that I've attended, I've heard a number of residents, both within Stonington Acres and out, express concerns about the noise and traffic together with requests that this project not be allowed to move forward. I only heard one in favor, a woman speaking on behalf of the Mystic Chamber of Commerce. And we're not even in Mystic. So they, what would they care one way or the other? In conclusion, I requested the board not approve the site plan as submitted and insist the applicant provide complete relevant data and that the board stop granting exceptions where data is incomplete or irrelevant. I will refer you to Mr. Webb's comments. I thought he was gonna speak before me, but he didn't. He's gonna speak after me. In this regard.
I was signed up in the last meeting. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But you have a doctor.
He's got a lot to say.
Furthermore, given the evasive and/or incomplete quality of information submitted by the applicant, requests of the board insist on the bonding requirement, which is going to be proposed by Mr. Webb. We demand that protections be put in place to guarantee that residents in the area surrounding Maple Leaf Farms may enjoy the safe and peaceful use of their properties for which they have purchased under the assumption that they were in a non-commercial zone and have been paying taxes under that assumption. My recommendation to effect this is that stipulations be amended to provide that absolutely no amplified music be permitted and alcohol not be allowed to be served on the property. Let's make it a bucolic, peaceful, family-friendly, agriculturally-oriented property as the Agricultural Heritage District designation implies. And finally, how would you members be voting if this were in your neighborhood? I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Sandra Pereira. Evening, Sandra.
My name is Sandy Pereira. I own the property at 182 Dolly Drive. My, our property was bought in 330, 1994. My husband and I bought the property in 1998. We are about approximately six acres and a stone wall away from the property in question. So today, what I wanted to share with you is my own personal experience, and this is a little difficult for me, but I really, I've had a cancer treatment, and my son has been attending these meetings.
Relax, please. This is, make it as informal as you're comfortable with.
Okay, so I would have liked to have spoken earlier. I've listened, you know, secondhand to what has gone on in the meetings. But tonight, I'm here, I want to strongly oppose the request for the permits for this venue. What I, I would like to explain to you what happened. There were two events. There were two incidences. These occurred when my husband was dying. My husband and I were, my hus, I was in the ICU with my husband, and we got a phone call from my daughter and my sister-in-law. My sister-in-law is a physician who is not, you know, rattled easily. There was some sort of a loud sound, and they called the police. The horses were upset. Everyone was upset. It was not your usual sound. They called the police, and my family called me. My, my sister-in-law had to calm the horses. It was a big to-do. The police went. They said there was some sort of a ceremonial cannon that the property was using in some sort of a personal celebration that was going on. They were asked to stop. That was the last I heard of it for a while until it happened again. This time, it happened when my husband was hooked up to oxygen, morphine, on hospice at home. So you can see how upset it makes me just to recall what happened. I called the police. I said, "Again?" It had startled us. It sounded like a cannon was coming through our windows. It was so loud and so disruptive to everybody. The police came. They asked to access my property, which has the trailhead there, walked back the trail to the stone wall, and again said, and the other officer, it took the cruiser around to speak to the people on the property. He said it was, again, some sort of a cannon that they are using in this cell, in their activity, their social activities on their property, and he asked them again to stop. And obviously, at that point, I complained. I said, "My husband, we need some peace. We've already complained about this before." You know, it was upsetting enough when my sister-in-law was here trying to take care of the kids, trying to take care of the horses when my husband and I were at the hospital. Now, my husband was dying in our home, and it was. So I just would like you to consider that, because I understand for my son that he tried to bring up this incident. It was very upsetting to all of us, and that it was denied in a previous hearing that this happened. And I'm telling you right now, there's me and about six other people in our family that can tell you that it did happen. You can probably go over to the police department records, because I'm sure there are not many phone calls that came out of our property over the past 25 years. I really would like you to think about this, and I'd like it to be on record. So after this is all approved and everybody gets what they want, and we have noise complaints, please, think about what my family went through in 2014 and 2015, when they were not listening to the police, asking them to stop with a silly cannon. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be on the record.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Jackson from Wheeler Road. Evening, Bill.
Good evening. Bill Jackson, 417 Wheeler Road. This is a very difficult thing for me to stand up in front of you, men and women. Hi, Lisa.
Bill, relax. It's, you don't have to be nervous.
And Paul, and I don't remember your name, but these are my direct neighbors, and we've got, I've been living here for 25 years, raised a family here, three children. We've had a lovely time here. It's a beautiful, quiet country roads. I've asked Paul to my house to help me with, you know, an odd end here. I've been to his house, helped him a little bit for an afternoon or two, working on his house when he was building his paddock. You know, there's, there's noise over there all the time. Throughout the years, there's been noise at my house, you know. A neighbor should be able to do whatever he wants without anybody, you know. I don't, I'm not the kind of guy that's gonna bother somebody if they're, you know, building or whatever they're doing, cutting wood, whatever they're doing. But when it comes to, give you an example. I'm outside walking my dog, and, you know, Paul entertains, and he's got a pond back there. And one night, I'm out late walking the dog. This has gotta be 10 years ago. And they're having a bonfire, and it's great, you know. They look at them, they're having a great time. And one of his, I don't know whether it was relative, or one of his guests is singing opera. And I'm thinking, man, that's kinda cool, you know, they're having a good time. But I couldn't believe how well I could hear it, you know. I gotta be 1,000 feet away or so, but I could hear it just crystal clear. And, you know, they're down there playing bocce ball or whatever, and I can hear it, but I don't care because it's my neighbors. They should be able to live and do whatever they want. It's a nice rural area. Everybody's got enough space. But when it comes to, you know, having wedding venues and having people there disrupting, you know, everybody wants to have a nice Saturday or Sunday, beautiful weather, and vehicles coming in and out, and, you know, it's gonna get loud. It's gonna degrade my neighborhood's quality of life. Everybody I talk to on Wheeler Road, Tagwong, Summers Lane, they don't want it. They don't wanna have that part of their lifestyle, and I'm sorry to say this because I really genuinely like you people, but I don't want it in my neighborhood. And none of the people they talk to want it in their neighborhood. And it's not a personal attack on you. Like I say, it's very hard to stand here and speak against you because you're good people. But I, this is not why I moved to Stonington. I moved to Stonington for peace and quiet. I wanted to just be left alone, and I don't wanna bother anyone else. Now, I have another. Now, I have another concern other than the, the noise. You know, it didn't bother me when Paul parked, it was like early winter, he parked a trailer with a duck house on it and there's ducks in his pond, you know, right in the wetland. I didn't care, you know? Let the man, man do what he wants to do. It's none of my business. But when it, when it comes to, you know, Summers Lane, this is where people are going to get to this venue. They're going to come down 95. Very few people are going to come down 184 and egress down Wheeler Road from that entrance. They're going to get off at exit 91, they're going to come up Dog Walk, they're going to go down Summers and up Wheeler. Now, I've been living there 25 years. Twice myself, I've traded mirrors with people on Summers Lane. I have a hard enough time dealing with bicyclists on those roads, any one of those roads, just a mere bicycle, pedestrians. It's known when you walk in our community, you come up on somebody that's walking their dog or something, you slow way down, you know? Just a neighborly thing to do. I'm afraid that's not going to be happening with people that are coming from out of town that don't know our, the way we live. They don't, they're not accustomed to our ways. That's really the long and short of it. I'm sure I'm forgetting about 10 other things, but, you know, again, I don't mean anything bad by you people. I just don't want you to have a wedding venue in my neighborhood and none of my neighbors want it. I don't want the loud music. I don't want limousines coming in at all, you know? During the day, they got to bring the brides and the grooms. You got to bring food trucks in there. You've got to bring in the tents and all the other things that go along with it. You know, I've been to plenty of, plenty of weddings. The new thing is now you're going to be bringing school buses in to pick up the, you know, the people that are kind of drunk and bring them off to wherever they're going to stay at their hotels. You know, I'm aware of all these things. I don't mean anything bad or mean to come to you people, but I don't want it in my neighborhood and none of my neighbors want it. And I would beg you guys to consider this. I know you all live in this town. Half of you probably live on small roads. Would you want this going on in your neighborhood?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Richard, Richard Webb. You did sign up last night.
I signed up.
But you're above the line, so.
I apologize.
Don't apologize.
I didn't.
It's not necessary. Good evening, Mr. Webb.
Good evening.
And welcome back.
Thank you. And commissioners, just one point of clarification. I know at the last public hearing, Commissioner Conway wanted to make sure that we could essentially talk about the entire application again. I want to make sure that. There was discussion earlier about just erosion and sediment control and I, I think it's.
Everything that was submitted in the last public hearing is before this decision. So this is a continuation.
Thank you.
And everything is wrapped into this.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
So everything that you previously said to us is on the record.
I appreciate that. And there are a couple of updates that I'd like to, to give you, give you. But essentially tonight, I'd like to focus on five areas of concern. We have reviewed the, the updated erosion and sediment control plans. But as we look at the entire application, there are five areas I want to focus on. The first one, you've heard me talk about before, and that is handicap parking. And it may, it may seem like a very simple, small issue to, to, to you all. But it's very frustrating to me and very concerning to me that the handicap parking that was presented in the February 24 zone change did not meet ADA requirements. The handicap parking that is now currently on the plans does not meet ADA requirements. And I've mentioned this and we are getting, we get just radio silence. We don't get any response. We don't get any corrected, updated plans. I, I, I'm perplexed and I don't understand why this is not being addressed, why it's not being addressed by town staff and, and staff consultants when they review the plans because it's a black and white issue. It doesn't meet current ADA standards.
You just want to like, sort of, the number, the size, the purpose.
It's not the number. It's the location and the access.
The walk, walkway.
It's the location and the access. The frustrate, part of the frustrating thing is it's such a simple thing to fix. We've highlighted it. It's simple to fix. It's not being fixed. And I'm trying to understand why. Again, because the enforcement of handicap parking per the ADA requirement, this is a civil action that the state or that the feds, the Department of Justice, if there's still a Department of Justice, they are the ones who will enforce it. This is not a little, just, look, it's, it might seem minor on the site plan, but it has major ramifications.
We understand the situation.
And I don't want my tax dollars going to pay for town council to help defend this a civil complaint. I don't want enough. Item two, as part of the type two site plan requirements for this project, Article 15.3.7.2B requires a landscape plan. A landscape plan has not been submitted. What the plan does show is a 25-foot-wide buffer along the north, to the north of the entrance drive, along Wheeler Road, west side, on the applicant's side of Wheeler Road. We asked for details of what this meant because the only thing it is is just a zone with hatchet and we asked what that, what that meant. We've had no response. So I still don't know what it means. But what I do know is that a landscape plan per the type two, type two site plan application is required. And I do know that the AHD zone requires buffers adjoining adjacent properties. So we have none of that. We have no details and we have no buffers to that. And now with the new topsoil stockpile area, they're busting through the stone wall in one area to get access to that topsoil site. And we have a butters to the north of that. And I would argue, we need some permanent vegetation in that area to prevent the light trespass, again, consistent with the AHD zone requirements. Third item, storm drainage. I find it interesting that a three-lot subdivision at Al Harvey Road, there are infiltration tests required, dual-ring infiltrometers, rain gardens, there's all of the, what I would consider proper stormwater management techniques being, being asked for, being proposed and being agreed to by the developers of 550 Al Harvey Road. We mentioned this at the last meeting. There's none of that here. We don't even have an infiltration, a single infiltration test done. We've got more than one acre of disturbance. We have 700 yards of topsoil moving, 700 tons of stone coming in. We don't have one infiltration test to, to confirm the adequacy of this proposed drainage. What we heard last month was, quite frankly, a very back-of-the-napkin common sense. It stands to reason if you strip topsoil and only put stone in, it's going to be better, so it'll work. I'm not saying it won't, but you have to, you have to go through, per type two site plan application, Article 15.3.7.2F, there's a site drainage, stormwater requirement that is not being addressed in this application. So so far, we have one item, handicap parking, that's incorrect. We've got two items that are not being supplied per, very specifically, per the requirements of a type two site plan application. No one is flagging these issues. I'd like to get the traffic for a second. You've heard some of the previous testimony about the concern about the traffic and I think that is really my concern. This is not, in the original Hasketh report, he talked about slight changes in level of service and that sort of thing. I am less worried about the level of service. I am much more worried about the overall safety of everyone who uses Wheeler Road. Not only the vehicles, not only the people who live on Wheeler Road and know how to operate safely. Again, it's 20 feet wide, guardrails on, on either side of it. It is a rural, winding road. It's a scenic road. The horizontal alignment doesn't meet any, any new road standard. It's an old road. It's an old country road. And my concern is the safety, not only in terms of the vehicles, not only trading mirrors on Summers, but on, but on Wheeler. Wheeler is a very popular road used by bikers. See them every day when I walk. Walkers, joggers, people are on that road. And certainly as the weather improves, as we work into wedding season, there's more and more of the bicycles and, and joggers and walkers on Wheeler Road. So I'm really worried about the safety. I'm more worried about the safety than the actual traffic counts, even though the traffic counts that were submitted are, as we talked last week, last month, I would argue are irrelevant. I am intrigued, staying with traffic for a second, I am intrigued by the comments that the 400-foot sightline distance from the new driveway apron is achievable without any additional clearing. I mentioned this at the last meeting. I said, I don't know, but I think there's an issue. I went out there and I, I flagged, I identified 400 feet, both to the north and to the south. It's painted on the pavement. If you all want to go out tomorrow, I would love it if you would, would take a look at it. As you, at the 400-foot points, to look at that driveway apron, you do not have clear sight distance. Now, I'm told the police commissioners are saying they're okay with the site plan, with the traffic plan as is. I don't know if they realize that clearing is required to achieve the 400-foot clear sightline. Or if you don't clear, you're not going to get 400 feet of clear sight distance. It's, it's, it's one or the other here. And I'm not sure what the police commissioners were thinking and expecting when they said they did not see any issue. But it's clear as day, and I'll be glad to meet with anybody from this commission or from the public, to show how even today, March 18th, you cannot see that driveway access point 10 feet in off the curb line. It's only going to get worse when the leaves come out. Just one last quick item on traffic. I meant, we talked about Summers Lane. I mentioned back in February 24 that the traffic engineers stated Summers Lane is a 20-foot-wide road. It's not. It's 20 feet in spots, but it necks down to 17 feet, four inches at the cover. And that has not been corrected in the public record. We are, this is a public hearing and I would ask that that be, that public record be corrected to state that Summers Lane has a, has essentially a throttle point at 17 feet, four inches. And that's where this trading of mirrors can come into play. Last item, event management and operations. We've asked and asked and asked for more details on event management and operations. This was a concern for zone change hearing and we were expecting a more detailed plan of operations and management as part of the type two site plan application. We received, I've seen nothing. Nothing in addition to what was submitted, nothing to supplement or further define and detail this than what was submitted at the zone change. I go back to what does the neighbor, what do the neighbors do when there is a noise issue? There's no, there's no protocol. There's no procedure. There's, there's nothing that is defined yet. Part of the, part of the operation there was also, who confirms if the zone change allows 20 large events per year, maximum two per week? Who monitors that? Is it, is it the police? Who is it? Who monitors the number of events? Who monitors the size of the tent? Who monitors the number of cars going in, in and out of this facility? It's capped at 175. You've got 88 parking spaces. What happens when 100 cars show up on this site? Where do they go? What happens? Who enforces the cutoff at 10 o'clock? Who enforces the lights out at 11 o'clock? We could say the police, but I guess the question is, are the police aware of what they are going to now be asked to do in terms of monitoring this, this operation? Are the, are the police aware of when these large events will take place so that they can essentially staff properly and prepare properly? The last part of the event management and operations, I'd like to talk about this, this liquor issue. At the February 20, 19, 2024 zone change, the commission, you all very specifically tagged a 9:00 PM cutoff for liquor sales. And I think you did it for a solid reason and I support that reason. Now we hear from the town planner that the state, that the commission cannot regulate the hours of sales, that only the state can regulate the hours of sales. Well, I did a little research and what the law states is not, is more than just, the law gives the outside limits of when you can sell liquor per the state liquor control commission. But in addition to that, any town may reduce the number of hours during which sales under subsection A of this section, da-da-da-da-da-da, are asked for. So my point is, state liquor control says this is the maximum. But every town, any town can do this if you want. So I would argue, no, you can maintain what you properly decided to do last, stipulate last February and say, 9 o'clock is that liquor sale end because we don't want drunk people driving down Wheeler Road. I would argue you can do that. So those are my five general points of concern. Errors, omissions, inconsistencies, non-responses to items, handicap parking, landscape, traffic, forget the other two. Stormwater and then event management. And I apologize, some of these concerns have been very technically based. That's my training. I'm sorry. It, it comes out when I, when I review, when I review plans. My wife and I are new to Stonington. We've only been here about a year. It's the first time we've been in front of this commission and I want to thank you all for, for, for your time. But my overall feeling right now is, is a mixture of disappointment, a mixture of professional concern, and quite frankly, just a whole bunch of frustration. Because from my perspective, something is not right. Why is it the neighborhood who has to go to town hall and insist that the wetland, wetland areas be flagged? Why is it the neighborhood, or me, getting up on February 18th and say, you have to do a sediment and erosion control plan? Otherwise, it would have just, if I hadn't mentioned it, it would never have happened. Otherwise, it would have just, if I hadn't mentioned it, it would never have happened. Why are all the Type 2 site plan amendments that are in the town regulations not being required of this applicant? Why is the applicant allowed to simply ignore comments and questions? I do support the AHD zone. I think it's solid. I think it's sound. I think it absolutely makes good sense for the future growth of the town of Stonington. I am not against AHD. But AHD provides a wide range of uses. And I would argue, if the applicant was proposing a boot peak hotel, a farm stand, a farmer's market, farmers, farm-to-table dinners, winery, greenhouses, craft manufacturing, it was even mentioned at the last meeting, solar, any of those don't have the impact on this rural neighborhood that a large wedding facility will have. A large event, 175 people, 20 times a year, two times maximum a week, a large event at this location on this winding scenic rural road adjacent to an existing established residential neighborhood, in my mind, we're simply trying to put a round peg in a square hole, and it doesn't fit. If the site were on Route 1, if the site were on Togwank, if the site were on Pequot, if the site were on North Main, any, many, many other locations, this would be a very appropriate use. But I would argue, the intensity of this use at this site does not work. It has too dramatic of an impact on the rural character of that, of the section of Stonington. So with that, I appreciate your time. I very, very strongly, but very respectfully ask that you deny this application. We look forward to further discussions with you. I do have a kind of a summary of my remarks that I will hand out to the commissioners.
Thank you. Anything else wish to speak on this application?
Yes, I have one more thing to add. It won't be very technical.
May I approach?
Please. Well, wait a minute. Does anyone who hasn't spoken yet wish to speak? Before we give enough opportunity to speak again? I'm sorry. Okay. Please. It's Bill Jackson.
It is, it is, me again.
Evening again.
Yes. So also, it occurred to me that we've got, we all understand that we have these issues with Summers Lane being woefully inadequate for the amount of traffic anyway, never mind adding to it. And I wonder, whose responsibility, who is going to be responsible when bad things happen? When people that aren't accustomed to driving down that road, when we put this extra stress on these roadways and accidents happen, people go off the road, they go into the ditch, they do damage that the town has to pay for, that we, the citizens, have to pay for. Ultimately, the citizens are saying, this is not a good idea. So I think that you are all going to be responsible. And it's going to be on you ultimately, if you let this go through. You're each going to have to look yourself in the mirror if somebody dies. And I'm, this is extreme, but these are my fears. And I just want to impress upon you the best way that I can that this is a bad idea. You know, it's just a very small road. It cannot handle this extra stress. It can't even handle the stress that we're putting on it right now, you know? And that's really what I wanted to bring to your attention, and I hope you're really hearing what I'm saying. This is not a good idea. And it's not that I don't like these people, they're lovely people. They're, they're my neighbors. I've known them for 20 years, as long as they've been here, maybe not that long, but we all try to coexist in this neighborhood, but we need to do the right thing for the community, you know? Yeah, they want to build a wedding venue, but it's not the right fit here. This is a small, beautiful road. Everyone prides themselves on Wheeler Road, Togwank is being beautiful roads, Summers Lane, Al Harvey. Let's keep it that way.
So the traffic authority in town is the police department?
I'm not, okay.
Is the police department. We have certain responsibilities with respect to traffic, but I want to clarify that for you.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
No problem.
I just, uh...
I understand your, I understand your concern.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this application? The applicant desire rebuttal time?
I'd like to speak a little bit.
Yeah.
More on the personal side than on any of this other stuff. I'm San, Sharon Cerulo. I own Maple Lawn Farm along with my husband. And is Sandy still here? She's left. Her son, I guess, brought up with the cannon thing a long time ago when we first started this application. And I quickly said to her, we don't own a cannon, and no policeman has ever, I said to her son, and no policeman has ever knocked on my door and asked what the noise was. Now she's saying it happened twice. I'd like to see a police report because I'm not aware of it. That's the first thing. The second thing I'd like to say is that you haven't been here that long. The AHD was approved by Stonington, and a lot of your discussion comments should have been brought up when they decided to pass the AHD.
Address the commission, please, okay? If you don't mind.
So, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But the fact is, there is an AHD, which is a floating zone. And most of the farms are located on rural roads. So I'm not sure what people expect when they allow, when they say, these are the activities that are allowed in an AHD. They are going to be on rural roads. That's where the farms are located. Another thing is the word contiguous. In the very beginning, when the idea of contiguous was brought up, it was decided that it was not defined correctly in the statutes. I went home that night after being told we were not contiguous, and looked up in the dictionary, in the real estate dictionary, and a couple of other places, what is the definition of a budding, and what is the definition of contiguous? And in all three places, it said contiguous is a budding, and a budding is contiguous. So that should never have been an issue. Those acres on the other side of the street are part of the farm, and are contiguous and a budding at the same time.
Did I conclude your remarks?
There are many other things I could say. These are the personal things that I'm feeling have not been explained. Some of the people that spoke today were not at the first meeting, were not at the second meeting, were not at the third meeting. They are unaware of everything that came up in the previous meetings. And now they're here, and they're bringing up issues that have already been addressed. Every time this committee has suggested that we do this, we do this, we hire this person, we hire this, all the engineers, all the specials, every time you asked us to do something, we didn't. We've spent a load of money, we're not building anything, not a building, and we feel we have addressed every issue that you have brought up. And if we had it, you should have told us we hadn't. That concludes my speech.
Thank you. Anyone else wish rebuttal time? Mr. Swill?
I'm just going to add some comments to my list. Wolf's Roar, Maple Lawn Farm. The frustration level is, is growing by the moment. Your process started with an application to go into the AHD. We submitted that. You asked us to provide you with Class A studies, Class A surveys, that were identical to the surveys that were already in the town files. We did that. That was only 10,000 bucks. You asked us for a plan of operation in the original application for the AHD.
Mr. Swill, this is an application this evening for the site development. We approved, we approved the master plan.
Right. In that master?
We approved the master plan. The comments this evening should be on the application that's in front of us. That's what the comments that the folks who are opposed to it made, and you're, you should make your comments about the application that's in front of us. We approved the master plan. So any complaints that you had about what you were put through, you only had to do on the master plan what everybody else did, and an A2 survey is very commonly the baseline for these two things.
I understand that.
So please, please understand that you weren't asked to do anything that isn't in the regulations, and you didn't do anything that isn't in the regulations. And what we're talking about this evening is the site plan, and I'd ask you to confine your remarks to that.
Okay. My site plan is based on the numerous meetings we've been to in the past. Clifton has sent me letter after letter after letter saying, we need these six points at the next meeting, we need this one point at the next meeting. And the assumption when I get those letters is that everything prior to that satisfied whatever the town's requirements were in both the master plan and in the site plan. And I'm hearing tonight that we didn't do any of that. We absolutely didn't do that, at the request of the town. I don't know what else to say. All the experts have been involved, from traffic to erosion, you name it. I don't know what else to do. I mean, we just keep getting on planes and coming here to come to these meetings in, in response to everything's been asked of us.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I don't know that we could have been more honest, more open, and more thorough, in spite of what I'm hearing tonight.
Does anyone who spoke in favor wish any rebuttal time? Anyone who spoke against wish any rebuttal time?
Richard Webb, 445 Wheeler Road. Just a very couple, couple quick points. I want to emphasize, and we have been to all the hearings regarding, with this commission regarding the zone change and this, and this site plan application. But I want to emphasize that the requirements of the AHD, which we support, as I, I can't, I want to emphasize again, we don't, this is not, I think the AHD is absolutely solid. It's just this one particular use that's listed as a potential in the AHD that puts our round peg in a square hole on this site. But Type 2 site plan requirements from the zoning regulations, a landscape plan, buffers are required in, in a budding residential zones for any project that does secure the AHD floating zone classification. Stormwater drainage analysis, drainage calculations, unit hydrographs, they are required as a part of your regulations for a Type 2 site plan application. My question is, why aren't they being essentially effectively enforced here? Because we don't have that information as a part of this application. So I would argue the application is incomplete, and that is why I very respectfully, but very strongly urge you to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any rebuttal from anyone? Yes, sir.
Just a quick, uh, actually, just, sorry. In the master, it's Bill Burchie again, representing the firm. During the master plan, we had, in a much smaller scale, where we talked about all the buffers, and we knew about them, and there was a singular plan that just talked about buffers. And up this side of the site is, you know, several hundred feet of forest. There is farmed territory up here, which can be, which, which actually they, they co-own, and that, that was handled in a lack of any permission. This is all open, uh...
It's the land trust.
I'm sorry, land trust. So it's all forest down here. And I believe what Mr. Webb's talking about is this, that how would we do a buffer along this place? And basically, we acknowledge it's there, we don't have a plan, we don't plan to change anything. So yeah, there's not a planting plan, there's not a species plan, but it's also one that we can't go in and clear cut that area, you know, just basically leave it as it is. And, you know, recently, they were, they were working on an opening for the fire trucks to get in here, and the fire trucks to come around there. But the purpose of saying the buffer here, it's here to be maintained, but there was no plan or we figured a need to plant, you know, call it a planting plan there. So if it's a question about the landscape, you know, it's just in this region.
Now, Mr. Webb.
Richard Webb, 445 Wheeler Road.
Evening again, Mr. Webb.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This buffer, there is, there has been clearing already accomplished in that area to build the fire access drive. I talked about this 400-foot sight distance, which I think the applicant is alluding to the fact that some of the trees in that area are what are making, are, what makes up the buffer that will remain in this area. I strongly encourage you all to look at the 400-foot points, and you tell me if there's not mature trees that need to be cleared in here. I would argue they do. Please don't look at the plan here. The 400-foot distances are incorrectly plotted, they're supposed to be back off of the curb line. There certainly, there's no reason to be looking, worrying about a northbound car north of the site. The sight distance is on the southbound side, so we're on the inside part of this curve, working back into our property site.
We understand intersectional sites.
Okay. There are mature trees in here. We either clean, we either maintain them as a buffer, and we don't give the police their 400-foot sight distance, or we take them down. And by the way, if we take them down, oh, by the way, we're in the 400-foot upland review area for the wetlands on the other side of the road as well. So I am very perplexed as to why the applicant is saying there's no clearing is required in this area. I believe there is, and I would strongly encourage the commission, there's a painted mark over here, and there's a painted mark over here. It doesn't take long to drive by, get out of your car and look, and locate this point and say, oop, can't see it. The, the trees are less mature on this inside part of the curve. They are very mature right in this section.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
I just have a question.
Just please step, come forward. Just take your name again, please. Thank you.
I would like to ask if the gentleman thinks that he has more knowledge than the police department as far as safety on the road.
I, I, I don't want to get into that discussion. I, I don't want to get into that discussion. I, we, we said that the, the traffic authority in town is the police department. This isn't a discussion between you and other people in the audience.
Okay.
It's a discussion between you and the commission.
Because I feel like he's challenging the expert-
You can make your remarks to the commission.
Okay.
I encourage you to do that.
Okay, so I feel like the-
It isn't a discussion between you and any other member of the audience.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Clifton?
I have a rebuttal. Well, it's only relevant to some of the comments about the items required of the application, it's not on the project itself. To address the buffer, since that's the most recent comment, or the landscaping plan, the application at the master plan stage and before us now always came in with the intention of there is no additional landscaping. Everything is to remain as much as possible, and the only thing that was changing as proposed was the driveway component and the parking lot area. So that was what was proposed originally. Their original application said there was going to be no additional landscaping. The buffer area on the south, and I've spoken to Mr. Webb about this as well, the mature trees in that section, since Wheeler Road is a scenic road, are regulated by the tree warden. And so, any, any clearing of trees in the buffer area along a scenic road needs to be approved by the tree warden. So the applicant can't just go out and clear trees to achieve a site distance. That, that's not how it works on a scenic road like Wheeler Road. So, at least there would be some, a buffering of that buffer. There's going to be somebody that's going to oversee what clearing can be done to make sure that those scenic trees are not removed. The problem with the site distance, one, both the jurisdictional component with that's overseen by the Board of Police Commission, which we've established. And so it's really their oversight and their recommendation to the commission of whether or not it's an issue. But since that curb cut is pre-existing, just upgraded, the lack of a site distance, especially on a scenic road as they've historically been developed without site distances, does kind of fall under this concept of pre-existing. And so, any of the new development or the new uses on the site don't really trigger what would be required to bring it up to compliance for site distance. Again, that's, that's a gray area, but I'm kind of putting it in layman's terms of how that would operate. But any of the clearing in order to achieve a greater site distance to preserve safety has to be, one, approved by the tree warden, and then, two, if there is a concern about safety of, without a site distance, that's regulated by the Board of Police Commissioners. That's just on that item since, since we're discussing it. On the buffers, just going into the actual text for the AHD, section 1057G, I'm, it's a long section on the, on the buffers. Mr. Burci explained it pretty well about the adjacent parcels and properties. The only sentence I'm gonna highlight is that, "Buffer requirements do not apply to internal property lines which are part of the AHD, and do not border adjacent property." So if the property owner owns parcels against it that are contiguous to them, those parcels, the internal area of the AHD doesn't require a buffer against their own parcels. Similarly, "A buffer area shall be required between any area in the AHD which is used for other than agricultural or single-family residential purposes, which is abutting or directly across the street, other than a limited access highway." So, since the parcel to the north is partial, is part farmland, and then the other part is a forested conservation easement, just that sentence itself says you don't have to provide a buffer at the end of that agricultural component. So, anything to the north where it actually goes towards the other properties, there's no buffer requirement per the AHD. The buffer requirement would be, as stated correctly, to the, towards the parcel, which would be on the lower end of the site where the existing forested is said to remain. So that's where the only buffer is required to be, per the, per the rest. The other item I wanted to highlight was regarding the liquor sale hours. Mr., Mr. Webb did correctly cite the state regulation, but the reason why I cited that the stipulation number two in the zone change was not permitted was because when you, when the town regulates the hours of liquor sales, it has to be done contiguous across the town. Since there is no language in the regulations saying when liquor hours are, or liquor sale hours can happen in the town of Stonington, the commission can't individually regulate property by property. It has to be in the totality of the municipality. So, because then you would be, if, say if a liquor, actual liquor store in one part of town closed at, closed, or was required to close at 10:00 PM, in another part of town it was required to close at 11:00 PM, that's inconsistent with what the state would regulate. So it has to be contiguous across the board. So, in the future, if the commission wants to add language saying no liquor sales in Stonington can happen after this time, then that would, that would apply to everybody across the board, and would apply to applicants as they receive their permits.
I'd imagine that would be very well attended, yes.
I'm, I'm just saying, that's how, that's how it's applied. We did, we did, we did speak with the, or the zoning enforcement officer did speak with DCP just on that, too. So we did have a phone conversation with them. What I would say in terms of the content that's been shared, the additional recommended stipulations that I would say could be added to this application regarding the handicap parking component, a condition of approval could be to add detail on the sheet for the handicap to ensure that it's ADA, ADA-approved. That'd be probably on sheet S12, where all the other site details are. So, I mean, it states on the site plan that they will be ADA-compliant, but if the request is for a detail, you can require that as a stipulation. If, on the landscaping plan, there's proposed no change, if the commission wanted to add a separate sheet, again, stating no change as a landscape plan to meet that requirement instead of putting it on this master site plan, that could be an additional requirement.
Okay. What about the bond for sediment and erosion?
The, the bond can be added as well.
In an amount to be established by the town.
Yep, and just in that stipulation, basically, I would put in the traditional boilerplate language that we use for all the bonds.
Correct.
On the event management plan, I've, I fielded this question from a couple residents. And the event management plan is what was submitted at the zone change. And so the boundaries of what can happen, the number of events, everything is regulated by that. To answer the really specific question as how that enforcement happens, the enforcement would really be, one, the zone, the planning department, the zoning enforcement officer. Now, asking the zoning enforcement officer to do that at, at 10, 11:00 PM at night, obviously, that's a, that's a bit of an issue. All the other complaints, concerns about noise, about traffic, about incidents that could happen on the road, all of that kind of falls towards the police department and the Board of Police Commissioners, since what happens on the road is a traffic-related issue and not this commission's purview.
And again, with regard to that, if I can interrupt just a second. It isn't that we don't hear you on traffic, it's that we don't have jurisdiction. So, we, we appreciate your comments and, and invite you to make them, but it, it isn't really within our jurisdiction. And this did go to the, to the traffic authority.
And then, finally, regarding the comment on Summers Lane, that, that will be noted and, and updated in the, in the record. What I will say, though, is also that that road will then fall under the Department of Public Works. And so, any negative development or any further degradation of roadways in the town that aren't private roads falls under DPW. And so they would be required to go and make sure that these roads are safe and wide enough. The one real issue is that because Wheeler Road is a scenic road, there's a lot less ability to widen, make that safer, because that's a state-designated road. Anything on Summers, though, if there is a pinch point, then that would be an opportunity where DPW would have to go through a formal process to remedy that issue separately. Now, that doesn't address how people get there via ways or, you know, whatever, but it does help at least with that pinch point. So that would be something that DPW would traditionally handle. I don't think I've really answered all of the questions or concerns, but I've, I've just highlighted procedurally what the commission can do in this case, and procedurally, then, where residents can go when they have concerns on these issues. A lot of them can obviously be fielded by my department and my office, but then ones related to traffic and safety, and then ones related to road design and road width, those have to go to the separate entities. But I just wanted to provide that little background for the-
Thank you, that's all. If there are no further comments? Okay, Mr. Swill?
343 Wheeler Road. On the AHD, we purposely put the AHD parking places on the hard surface, on the turnaround in the parking lot. And that is a hard surface all the way to the beginning of the tent area. So I'm not sure what we're not in compliance with, with AHD. The spaces are wide enough, there are enough of them, and they're on hard surface, they're not parked on the grass.
If the access ways meet the standards as, in accordance with what, I think the building official is, is the one who looked at this, then, then you should be fine. So, we're not stipulating that you change anything here. What we're stipulating is that you meet the regulation. So if it is as you claim, there should be no additional information required. If you have to make changes, you're gonna have to make changes.
Fine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Webb?
Richard Webb, 445 Wheeler Road.
Evening again, Mr. Webb.
Yeah, this, and this will be the last time. Thank you for your patience. The parking spaces that are shown are located right down here, correct? Correctly dimensioned, correctly on hard surface, which was different than the last application. But that is not, the, the intent of ADA requires the closest proximal spaces to the event is where the handicap parking is to be located. So my, my position is, the location of these spaces is incorrect. We can't build, quote, "regular spaces" here and shift the ADA to a more remote location. It needs to be front and center.
So it's gonna have to be resolved, you know, down the road?
Yeah, exactly.
But it's, there is a stipulation that it be resolved.
And that's, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Just the last point is, I would argue, this driveway apron, yes, it is, the gravel road was there. I would dispute, though, that this is essentially a, by right, as a pre-existing condition. When it's a farm road, you don't even need 400 feet of site distance. When you put 100 cars on it, in and out, that changes it. That intensification of use changes how we have, how we should be addressing this driveway apron. So, the fact that it's soup, it's, it's located exactly where a current farm driveway was doesn't mean anything, as we're adding now 100 more cars to that access point, that intensification is something we need to consider.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes?
I'll just admit, I did, I've been purposefully oversimplify that comment. It's, it's a lot murkier than that, obviously.
Yeah, when you get into non-conforming uses, it's a, it's a area of the law that is, is a, a, more a phrase of art.
The existing component, it's because, it's because it's a scenic road, it's more difficult in the, in this particular case. It's, I highlighted it as a, like an extreme, but because it's a scenic road, that's kind of where the murkiness comes in.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? Hearing none, Clifton, are there any further comments?
No, so I'll just, I'll go over procedure. So because we are at the end of the allotted time for this application, what the commission has to consider is, the applicant has available another 11 days. So if the commission wanted to extend the public hearing and request more information from the applicant, they could do that, but we would have to schedule a special meeting within that next 11 days. Because with, if you're requesting additional information, the public hearing has to remain open, so you couldn't close the public hearing tonight if you did something like that. If you closed the public hearing tonight, you could deliberate and schedule a special meeting within another 11 days, and then make a decision based on the information provided. And then finally, you could close the public hearing and then make the decision tonight, which is the recommended procedure, so we don't schedule another special meeting. And, and so, in doing so, the commission, if the commission closed the public hearing and then added stipulations which required additional items from the applicant, that wouldn't fall under new information. It would just be stipulations part of an approval process. If the commission chooses to deny in citing that denial, then the commission has to cite which parts of the regulations are not adequate. So that's just procedurally the boundaries you're working with.
So the options are, leave it open, we'd have to have a special meeting in 11 days, approve with conditions, or deny with stipulations?
Correct.
Okay. And the stipulations, the stipulations of why?
Reasons, yeah.
Correct. Okay. If there are no other comments from the public, and the commission has no further questions, I think the matter before us is, do we close the public hearing? And I, I guess, by show of hands, I would say, is, is the commission, and not asking which way you'd vote, but is the commission comfortable on voting on this this evening?
Meaning the entire, closing the hearing and the applicant?
Closing the hearing and voting, either for or against. Just raise your hand if that's the direction you want to go in. Okay, then, then I think we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Close, and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No abstentions, passage unanimously, public hearing is closed. What is the commission's pleasure on the application of Maple Lawn Farm?
Mr. Chairman, and I want to make it noted for the record, I am making this motion so that the commission has something to vote upon. I want it clear that I'm not making it because I feel one way or the other, just to have the commission have an action to take. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve this site plan application. I want to confirm, Clifton, the waivers, we have the reasons for the waivers requested.
And we can do both of those at the same motion?
Correct.
Okay. Making a motion to approve the site plan application as submitted with the following, as I have a count, 10 stipulations. Number one, event hours shall be permitted between 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Events set up and breakdown shall be permitted between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. Number two, outdoor amplified music shall not be permitted for events without approval of a revised master plan and site plan application. of a revised master plan and site plan application. Amplified music shall not be permitted outside of event hours. Number three, any generators, fans, or cooling devices used for events shall have sound attenuation to minimize noise pollution. Number four, any further improvements located within the upland review area are to be reviewed by the inland wetlands and water course commissions, commission, pardon me. Number five, the applicant shall address any outstanding comments to the satisfaction of Ledge Light Health District. Any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments shall be subject to review and approval by the town planner and commission as necessary. Number six, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number seven, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's 11 plant evidence records. Number eight, a handicap parking detail shall be added to the site plan. Number nine, a landscaping, landscaping, pardon me, landscape plan shall be added to no, no changes as part of the site plan. And number 10, a bond for sedimentation and erosion control shall be required in an amount to be determined by the town engineer.
Motion made with stipulations, and I would just ask you to consider one modification.
Sure.
Instead of an ADA parking detail, I think we said that it will be determined that ADA parking as shown is in compliance with ADA requirements.
Okay. I'll amend that, number eight, for that language, then. Okay? Handicap parking shall be as shown as in compliance, sorry.
Motion made with stipulations. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I just, just to, for clarification, to put it out there, this is a site plan only, the master plan was already approved, which stipulated how many big events, small events, sound, all of that. So we are only voting on what was today as a site plan. Just putting that out there for you.
Yep.
Good point.
I just want to say, I was not on the master plan, I wasn't on the zone change, I've only been here since August. I've been on this commission for 12 years, well, not contiguous, a budding, whatever the word is, for 12 years. This is not an appropriate thing. I've listened to neighbors talk, you know, and there's that NIMBY thing, and I understand that, and I have a lot, this is not an appropriate thing to put here, and I feel for the neighbors, I really do. It's going to be loud, there's going to be maybe no cannons. Saying a tent is enclosed is crazy. It's, it's not, it's not an inside venue. I had a tent in my backyard when I got married, and I went around to every single neighbor and told them what I was doing, and they were, it was a big neighborhood, and they were fine with it, but they're loud. You put this flops up on a summer night, the music travels really far, and so I'm going to oppose this. Like I said, I wasn't there for any of it, I understand what you're saying. There was no stormwater plan, I can go, I'll go on that. I think the stormwater, I listened to Seamus talk last time, he said, we're putting down gravel instead of topsoil, there's, there's fabric under the gravel, you're not just putting the gravel there, there were no test pits there. You know, I don't, I didn't buy what he was saying about the stormwater. I am, I'm an engineer, I'll say, I am a civil engineer, I do stormwater plans for a living, and I didn't buy anything he said. So I'm opposed to this, if that's beyond reason, the stormwater management.
Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion?
I will say one thing, just, just for the record, I hear the neighbors' concerns, I definitely do. I live behind the Innimistic, so I know about music, wedding venues, and everything else. I understand it, this is, I understand the concerns about noise, I think they are trying to mitigate those, but I hear that, and I also hear the traffic concerns.
I think maybe a roll call, starting with Mary Ellen?
I, I think I have to vote for, only because we've already put everything out, like it's only this site plan, and I agree with Alisa with the noise and all of that came up in the master plan, but it was approved, so we can't go back in time, unfortunately. So because I look at the regulations and, and what we can in fact vote, and I was following along, right along with everybody, there isn't anything that, that hasn't been provided.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
No. I'm opposed.
Mr. DC?
I approve.
Gary?
I approve.
Okay, Chair abstains, so the matter passes. Thank you all for your comments this evening. Has everybody looked at the future public hearings and new submissions?
I have.
Yeah.
I will not be able to be seated next time.
Okay.
So, yeah. Because the April 1st, so I know you're not here.
I am not here on April 1st.
Okay, we'll have to make sure that we have...
No, you're back from Denver. I got back, I got back from Denver.
I was just saying, make, see if David's going to be available.
Where you staying?
Unless...
Doing motine?
Yeah. Got you. Okay. Clifton, any further comments?
I'll say.
Okay. I think the appropriate motion is in order, there's no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this.
No second required, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Maybe I'll just bump in.